Ready? Sorry for the delay. We'll start out by giving you some information, requirement of the this particular new mobile. I understand that state law currently requires that the following announcement be made at the beginning of every remote council session as we are still in the red and we're not, it's not clear to me when we'll be able to physically meet in the city council chambers. Due to the current public health emergency, we're obviously in remote session. We're using Microsoft Teams to make this remote meeting possible. Instructions for how the public may view the meeting and offer public comment are included in the stated meeting notice that was published in the Daily News Inquirer and Legal Intelligence prior to the meeting and can also be found on P H L Council dot com. We're going to get started now. I know that the hour has come, so I'm going to ask the clerk, please call a rule to take attendance. Members obviously were indicated by saying present, but also adding a different word to make sure that your sound was picked up. Mr. Stitt.
Councilwoman Bass.
Good morning, President, and looking forward to today's proceedings.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Brooks. Councilwoman Brooks.
Hi, this is Allison from Councilwoman Brooks staff. She lost power and is on her way to City Hall now, but may not be able to participate until she is reconnected.
Okay, all right.
Councilwoman Dom.
Good morning, Council President, colleagues and the public.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gaultier.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues and everyone. Happy to be here today.
Morning, Council Lady.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Happy to be here today. Thank you.
Morning, Council Lady.
Councilman Green.
Morning, colleagues. I was happy to be here today. Look forward to our conversation in today's council session.
Morning, Councilman.
Councilwoman Jen.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Look forward to to our work today.
Good morning, Council Lady.
Councilman Heenan.
Good morning, Council President and good morning, colleagues.
Morning, Council.
Councilman Johnson.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I want to also say thank all of you for your prayers, your words of encouragement, your words of support during the passing of my sister. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman, and our prayers continue to be with you and your family.
Councilman Jones.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning, Philadelphia. We will survive.
Morning, Councilman.
Councilman O.
Good morning. Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues.
Morning, Councilman.
Councilman O'Neil.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning, Councilman.
Councilwoman Parker.
Good morning, colleagues. Good morning, Council President, and good morning to the people of Philadelphia.
Morning, Council Lady.
Councilwoman Canuna Sanchez.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. Look forward to our work today. Thank you.
Good morning, Council Lady.
Councilman Squill.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. Looking forward to a good day's work.
Morning, Council.
Councilman Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Happy to be here, ready to do the people's work.
Morning, Council.
Council President Clark.
Good morning. Thank you. And excuse me, Mr. Decker. I acknowledge you today as the clerk for this session. So we're going to get started. Despite the great need, we're not going to have invocation today, so we will first, however, observe a very brief moment of silent prayer for our city's leaders and the citizens in this current public health crisis. So may we please have a moment of silence.
Thank you. And to further recognize the challenging times that we find ourselves in, you know, we just would like to acknowledge everything that's going on. We have been full participants in all aspects of it, to our citizens, to all of those who are watching us, that have been involved in whatever way you have. We would like to, at this time, we want to take a knee. And we're going to take a knee, obviously, to recognize what we're going through as a nation and as a city. But we want to take the knee to recognize the memory of George Floyd, an individual until this particular time was pretty much anonymous to us all, but now recognizes the symbol of all of the things that could could be wrong in this country. I think the most important aspect of what happened as a result of that is that we come out of this stronger, better, more unified, take new forward, all of the things and right as much as possible the wrong that had been done. I think that if we don't do that, the memory of George Floyd will be lost. I'm just very concerned about the direction that we could conceivably go in, but today, this morning, I'm going to ask all members, please take a knee in this virtual format. So as we speak, can we all please take a knee to honor the memory of George Floyd and all that? It's unfortunate death. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you very much. Thank you. We will follow that up by doing the work to move our country, our city, and for all this citizen, move for the right direction. I want to thank you so much for that. Our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting on Thursday, May 21st, 2020, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Squill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 21st, 2020 be approved.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 21st, 2020 stand approved. All who was in favor say aye.
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 It was approved. Aye is heard, and the Journal is approved. Our next order of business is request for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the members of council, there are no requests for leaves of absence today.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. Our next order of business is communications. And clerk, Mr. Decker, will please read the messages from the mayor and other communications that he may have in his possession today.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, per your request that my administration note all business before council that should be considered related to our response to the pandemic or otherwise necessary to allow for expedited action, I respectfully request and submit for the consideration of your honorable body the following: An ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into an amendment to a joint use agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania pursuant to which certain parcels of real estate constituting the I-95 right-of-way located beneath the elevated highway between the Benjamin Franklin Bridge and the Walt Whitman Bridge are leased to the City of Philadelphia by the Commonwealth, subleased by the Interstate Land Management Corporation. And an ordinance amending an ordinance, Bill Number 180293, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing Revision of Lines of Grades in a Portion of City Plan Numbers 34S and 41S by striking from the city plan and vacating the legally open portions of Packer Avenue from Christopher Columbus Boulevard to the pier headline of the Delaware River and reserving and placing on the city plan a right-of-way for sewer and drainage purposes, water main purposes, and public utility purposes within the lines of Packer Avenue being stricken and authorizing acceptance of the grant to the city of the said right-of-way. And an ordinance authorizing the procurement commissioner on behalf of the city to enter into a concession agreement with Bicycle Transit Systems Incorporated for the operation, maintenance, and expansion of a bicycle sharing system and essential service during the COVID-19 period. And an ordinance authorizing the commissioner of public property on behalf of the city to acquire fee simple title or a lesser interest in real estate by purchase, dedication, donation, condemnation, agreement in lieu of condemnation, or otherwise, in parcels of land along the Delaware River and in the bed of the former Kensington and Taconi Railroad, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That will be reflected in the record. Our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. And clerk will please read the titles of the legislation that is being offered today by the members.
Councilwoman Parker offers one bill entitled An Ordinance Amending Title IX of the Philadelphia Code to create a new chapter nine, 5,000, and titled Food Delivery Services to regulate third-party food delivery services, require certain disclosures to consumers, and provide for a limitation on certain fees charged to consumers.
This bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson introduces one non-privileged resolution entitled a resolution encouraging the City of Philadelphia to support local business and shorten the supply chain by locally sourcing COVID-19-related equipment, supplies, and services from local businesses and suppliers in response to the COVID-19 pandemic emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, did you say it was privileged?
That's a non-privileged resolution, Mr. Decker.
Okay, thank you. This will be placed on on the final passage calendar in the next session of council.
Councilman Heenan offers one bill entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the city to acquire fee simple title or a lesser interest in real estate by purchase, dedication, donation, condemnation, and agreement in lieu of condemnation or otherwise, in parcels of land along the Delaware River and in the bed of the former Kensington and Taconi Railroad.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
Councilman Jones offers an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 56th Street, Arch Street, Conestoga Street, and Market Street.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
Councilman Johnson offers two bills entitled An Ordinance Amending Chapter 19, 3200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Keystone Opportunity Zone Economic Development District and Strategic Development Area to provide for additional extensions of certain benefits for the purpose of facilitating economic recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic. And an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning to amend certain provisions of Chapter 14, 500, entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by creating the WCS West Chestnut Street Overlay District.
Thank you. These bills will be referred to the appropriate committees.
Councilwoman Sanchez offers two bills entitled An Ordinance Amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning to amend certain provisions of Chapter 14, 500, entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by creating the AME American Street Overlay District. And an ordinance amending the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Norris Street, America Street, Burke Street, and Third Street, and amending Title 14 to the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning to amend certain provisions of Chapter 14, 500, entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by creating the BNA Berks and American Overlay District.
Thank you. Those bills will be referred to the appropriate committees.
Councilwoman Canuna Sanchez also offers a privileged resolution authorizing city councils committees on public health and human services and commerce and economic development to continue to consider the City of Philadelphia's revenue collection and regulatory policies for businesses and property owners to support economic recovery from the COVID-19 crisis.
That will be on today's calendar.
Councilman Dom offers two bills entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Operation of Sidewalk Cafes During the COVID-19 Emergency Until December 31, 2020, in areas of the city where such activity currently must be otherwise authorized by special ordinance, and allowing expanded activity by currently licensed sidewalk cafe operations. And an ordinance amending Chapter 11, 100 of the Philadelphia Code entitled General Provisions to authorize the Streets Department to permit closure of the public right-of-way, including on-street parking spaces for public health, welfare, and safety purposes during the COVID-19 public health emergency until December 31, 2020, including expansion of business uses that cannot operate in indoor environment or have limited indoor capacity and/or service due to the COVID-19 emergency.
Thank you. It will be referred to the appropriate committee.
Councilman Thomas offers one bill entitled An Ordinance Amending Section 17, 109 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Local Bidding Preferences to amend reporting requirements to require the establishment of local business usage goals and reporting on reaching such goals as a way to assist community businesses recover from the COVID-19 pandemic.
Will be referred to the appropriate committee.
Councilman Squill offers two bills entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to enter into an amendment to a joint use agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania pursuant to which certain parcels of real estate constituting the I-95 right-of-way located beneath the elevated highway between Benjamin Franklin Bridge and the Walt Whitman Bridge are leased to the City of Philadelphia by the Commonwealth, subleased by the Interstate Land Management Corporation. And an ordinance amending an ordinance, Bill Number 180293, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing Revision of Lines of Grades in a Portion of City Plan Numbers 34S and 41S by striking from the city plan and vacating the legally open portions of Packer Avenue from Christopher Columbus Boulevard to the pier headline of the Delaware River and reserving and placing on the city plan a right-of-way for sewer and drainage purposes.
It will be referred to the appropriate committee.
Councilman O offers one privileged resolution entitled a resolution recognizing May 2020 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Philadelphia to commemorate the proud heritage of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders and their vital contributions that continue to enhance the city's culture, economy, and the founding ideals of independence and democracy.
And that will be on today's calendar.
There are another bills or resolutions being offered by the members today, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. We have no reports from committee today. Let me quickly recognize today's introduction of bills. This particular session was targeted for legislation or resolutions that will help facilitate the opening of the economy to provide opportunities for much-needed jobs. So we have focused on that today in this council session. The following session, we will be addressing a number of issues, particularly issues that relate to some of the current environment. But today, we'll be focusing on things that will help us deal with this particular economy. We anticipate having a significant number of issues addressed in our next session of council, very, very important session. Our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. No bill on the first reading calendar. But today, we are only considering those legislative matters on the second reading and final passage calendars that directly pertain to the COVID-19 crisis. A reminder that we are still in the pandemic. There are two such matters on the calendar. The prime sponsors of those matters have already communicated their desire to have those matters considered today. I therefore recognize Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up those matters from the second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. There are numbers 200332 and 200337. All other resolutions and bills are being held.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Before considering these resolutions, we will consider public comment. It will go as follows. Under normal circumstances, public comment must concern matters on the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action at a session of council. A speaker on any of those matters must sign up in order to testify. You must call 215-686-3406 by 5:00 p.m. the day before the session to sign up for public comment. When you call, you will take your number and your name and the number of your legislative item you are commenting on and whether you are in support of or against the legislation as you add to your list. We will telephone each person on the list during the council session and invite them to our remote meetings. And under our deal circumstances, they will have, we will have two minutes to speak, given the timeframe and the challenges that we have before us. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, we want to please ask for individuals to please adhere to the time limit. We have consistently had a lot of individuals that have indicated an interest in testifying, and we encourage that, but we do want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity. So there will be a time timer that will monitor your time. When you hear the ringing of a bell, maybe a little slight, the first ring will indicate that you have 30 seconds to conclude your remark. When you hear the longer ring, that would mean that your two minutes are up. Thank you so much for your participation, and thank you so much for your adherence to the guidelines that you have been pointed. So you're going to be muted and disconnected from the remote meeting after you conclude your testimony. Thank you very much. So again, the comment is limited to the matters called up by Councilwoman Parker. Resolutions Number 200332 and 200337. Thank you very much. Mr. Decker.
William Elder.
There'll be a brief pause as public commenters are connected, Mr. President.
Okay.
Hello? William Elder? Hello. Yes.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Please proceed.
Hi, thank you. Hello, my name is William Elder, and I'm a resident of Philadelphia's 2nd District. Thank you for taking my comment today. While I support the spirit of Resolution 200267 to the fullest, I'm calling today because I find the proposition that it could be implemented in any meaningful way completely farcical. The events of the last week have reminded us once again that too many law enforcement officials across the country are unable to use their own fists, elbows, and knees in a manner that does not infringe on individual civil liberties, more often than not African-American citizens. Providing the police department with more military-grade technology that may amplify or simply give cover to such bias is dangerous and unnecessary, and a truthless resolution will not prevent its abuse in a police culture that too often views itself as above the law, particularly when policing minority communities. Rather than adopt this resolution, I call on the city council to stand together against the police union in order to demilitarize the city's police department to substantially reduce department's budget, to ban the use of facial recognition technology in any capacity to end to bring about real reform in our police department before we have another George Floyd-like tragedy in Philadelphia rather than waiting until it's too late. The N double A C P and social activist array of both offer bullet point police reform recommendations that I encourage the council to consider. In closing, Black Lives Matter, John McNeese is trash. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
William Symptom.
William Symptom. That is me.
Yes. Hello?
Uh, that is, yeah, this is William Symptom. Can you hear me?
Yes. You're commenting on what resolution or bill? Just want to clarify.
Resolution 200267.
Six seven.
200267.
Uh, okay. So, all right. So we actually are only calling up for public comment for 200 332, 200337, but you are on now, so please proceed.
Oh, okay. Is this not?
Yeah, the problem is, just proceed. Yeah, we're only calling up a couple of matters on the calendar, given the current COVID-related situation. So we're only calling up certain bills for a public comment session, but you're already on, so just please, please proceed.
Okay, may I ask who is listening to the testimony?
Uh, everyone.
Oh, sweet. Wonderful, cool. Sorry. Hello. So I was under the impression that I was going to speak on Resolution 200267, Council Member Jones's resolution.
Yes, sir, sir. Sir, yeah, I'll just tell you, just go ahead. Just go ahead, because you're taking up your time.
Oh, sorry about that. I was calling to express opposition to the resolution, but only because I believe that the terrain has shifted. I deeply respect the foresight of Councilmember Jones and the concerns that others share for our several liberties, but this resolution was introduced in March. And although everyone who is listening to this call is in different parts of the city, I think if you look outside, you'll see that the terrain has shifted. The resolution speaks intelligently and perceptively to the automation of law enforcement tactics and is rightfully suspicious of the underlying framework in which facial recognition technology is being placed. I fear that it only lacks confidence. I think that Philadelphia is a city of forward thinkers and activists and heirs to luminaires like DuBois, and we should withdraw this resolution and reintroduce another as soon as possible to call for a moratorium on facial recognition usage by law enforcement until such a time as regulations are written by a civilian-led body and implemented first. We should write the rulebook before we play the game. We would be the first to do this. San Francisco has, and four towns outside of Boston have as well. Portland and Boston themselves are considering these bans right now, and Philadelphia has an opportunity to join them. A moratorium is a moderate assertion, given what is going on and given the conduct that we have seen. People are paying attention, and people want to gain, want to know that you'll protect us. We can't be Luddites, but we can't be laissez-faire. This issue touches all aspects of our lives, and divest its regulation in the roundhouse and in federal L E Os is not something that this council, with the leaders that it has, should allow. Algorithms that run through this city should be made to work for the people, should be controlled by the people. You can't eliminate bias in code because someone has to code it, but you can control bias, and you can lay a foundation where it's biased for us. I urge the council only to withdraw this resolution and to return quickly with a stronger stamp on facial recognition. It may fill it out.
We didn't call it up, so people called in to sign up for that, so just let the individuals state their position on that particular resolution.
The next speaker, Mr. President, is Hannah Sassiman.
Hello?
Hello? How are you?
Fine, how are you?
Good. Just state your name for the record, and please proceed with your testimony.
Hi, my name is Hannah Sassiman. I am the Policy Director at Movement Alliance Project, and I was hoping to speak on the facial recognition resolution as well, but I can also speak on three three two. At this moment in history, it is extremely important for all of the members of council who have a deep commitment to their communities and a deep commitment to all of the thriving of the city of Philadelphia to understand that both the unphobic rhetoric that we are seeing all over the city that Councilmember Gims spoke about in her resolution, and the complications of facial recognition and the bias that it can potentially embed that Councilman Jones put forward in his are deeply tied to the hundreds of years of racial oppression that black communities are rising up against right now. The city council has one moment with this budget session to listen to the call from the streets to defund the police, to take that fourteen million dollar excess that they were granted in the budget, and to put it into Office of Workforce Development, housing, into rec centers, and the community supports and services that truly help us thrive in the poorest big city in America with vibrant black and brown communities. We are supporting you in trying to take that brave stand right now and thinking deeply about your commitment to your neighborhoods and how coming out of this extraordinary moment in history and this crisis, we can transform them by doing what the city of Los Angeles did last night, and taking money that is earmarked for the police and putting it instead into our communities. Even though some of the resources are tied up in contracts, there are over seven hundred million dollars extra in that budget that are not necessarily tied up in contracts that can be reinvested as the movement for black lives and as thousands upon thousands of people and millions nationwide are saying. I'm grateful for this opportunity to speak. I know you will be hearing from many more people. And finally, I would say that the budget session for public testimony that you have open on June ninth is already full. It is absolutely incumbent upon council to open up at least one, if not more than one sessions for the people in the streets who are saying invest in our communities and divest from policing, from technology for policing are able to speak to you. I am grateful very much, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Point of information, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I truly appreciate the comments and insights of the public about the resolution dealing with the use of facial recognition, but what that intent of that resolution is not to promote and further the use of facial recognition technology, but to discover if we are indeed utilizing it and how. So if there is a misunderstanding on how, we are having a hearing to open up to the public, to be transparent about city resources being used for that, I wanted to put that on the record, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Decker?
Greg Albright?
Hello? Hello? How are you? I'm doing well. Hello? Hello, are you there?
It's my fault. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay, yeah. Just state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Absolutely. My name is Gregory Albright. I'm a Ph D. student at Drexel University. I've worked with some colleagues in the S T S, Science and Technology Studies Department, talking about issues of surveillance and facial recognition, and all the literature I've read and what I've seen shows that this technology, once it's used, it's really hard to roll back. It leads to lots of civil rights issues, lots of things that just create more problems than it solves, so I would encourage the council to vote against this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Absolutely.
Nikki Grant?
Hello?
Morning.
Can you hear me? Yes, I can hear you now.
Yeah. Ms. Grant, can you speak up a little farther for us to hear you?
Absolutely. My name is Gregory Albright. I'm a Ph D. student at Drexel University. I've worked with some colleagues in the S T S, Science and Technology Studies Department, talking about issues of surveillance and facial recognition, and all the literature I've read and what I've seen shows that this technology, once it's used, it's really hard to roll back. It leads to lots of civil rights issues, lots of things that just create more problems than it solves, so I would encourage the council to vote against this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Absolutely.
Nikki Grant?
Hello?
Morning.
Yes, good morning.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, could you speak a little louder? We're having difficulty hearing you. And just state your name.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, it's a little better, yeah. If you could state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
My name is Nikki Grant. I'm an attorney for Sub-World Project and a resident of West Philadelphia in the Third District. I'm here today to testify in the Resolution two hundred two six seven. For decades, we have seen police forces across the country gather more resources and tools, often with little to no author accountability. The evolution of SWAT, the SWAT team is one example. Try looking for police units that looked like the military before nineteen sixty, you won't find them. SWAT was created in the sixties largely in response to applications of black people across the country calling for justice. SWAT radically transformed police forces across the country, turning local police into the military. On Sunday, I watched in horror just blocks away from my house as men clad in military gear shot tear gas into my neighborhood at black youth who are fed about being criminalized and killed by police. But that's not all. Not only do these militarized units oppress people in my community, but they also hunger for new toys. I think this isn't only from things my community needs. And so I turned off the local defense software for F R S. Just like SWAT before it, this technology and the police units and practices that it will create around it radically transformed the police once again to our community's detriment. If we allow the police to add F R S to their arsenal, it will become Big Brother. Just as we have normalized the militarization of police, so we will normalize the common presence of police surveillance on the entire populace. Not only do I support setting clear boundaries and transparent policies around the use of F R S, I completely oppose the city, the state, or the federal government funding any money or resources or technologies that will heighten the criminalization of everyday life of the black people. The issue is twofold. Not only is it a concern about how F R S chills the freedom of speech and props up mass incarceration, it's also a concern about how these technologies drain resources from our communities and stifle the waste tax dollars. In addition to setting boundaries and clear practices around F R S, city council can take action to support our communities who are clamoring for justice by injecting the fourteen million dollar increase in the police budget. Twenty-five thousand Philadelphians have signed a petition that On the Sub-World Project started less than a week ago, calling for justice. So I call on the council to support Resolution two hundred two six seven, and I call on the council to reject any increase in funding for the police. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Devin Washington?
Hello? Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning. Just, please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Uh, oh, my name is Devin Washington. And, I'm sorry, I'm testifying right now.
Yes, you are alone.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, my name is Devin Washington, and I am testifying regarding the bill or regarding the resolution on facial recognition. And I just want to extend a thank you for holding this space in order for the public to testify regarding this resolution. I've been advocating against the use of facial recognition technology for some time, and now is the time for the community and our elected officials to be having that conversation. As an organizer, and as an organizer with Black Lives Matter, and I understand that we are in a deeply principled struggle for the soul of our city, and the technological capabilities of those in power is of paramount concern to me and my fellow organizers more broadly. And so this technology, especially where it's going, where cameras are able to track the movements of people, and where this is a use in which you are forcing people to basically hold their identification, hold their I D. like on their face, right? It really just kill, it really just does not serve the public, and it endangers marginalized communities because it allows for racist police officers to be able to track people almost with impunity. I understand that the use of facial recognition technology right now is not widely known, and that is also very concerning to me. But I think right now, council is in a great position to use this resolution to call on the mayor to actually just ban its use throughout the city of Philadelphia. Because in reality, if we are asking for the city, I mean, for the state and for the federal government to provide the policy on facial recognition technology, I feel like that only legitimizes its use, and you don't need to be parsing, we don't need to be figuring out like how it can be used safely, we need to just ban it indefinitely so that we can protect our First Amendment rights, right? Because we look at Ferguson, everything coming out of Ferguson, and as of right now, six people, six organizers that were present in the Ferguson uprising have been murdered. And so, you know, we know that there's a long history of police surveillance of black movements and of black people. And so if council wants to show solidarity for the moment that we are in nationally, they should use this moment to be on the right side of history and do the right thing in this moment, which is calling on the mayor to ban the use of facial recognition by executive order. So thank you so much for hearing my testimony, and I hope council can make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Kara Cloud?
Your call has been forwarded to an automated voice messaging system.
Next? Phil Mayfair?
Hi, this is Phil.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Is this a call from the city council?
Yeah, you're actually in the public meeting, so if you could just state your name and proceed with your testimony.
Great, thank you. My name is Phil Mayfair. I'm calling to object to Bill two zero zero two six seven and the use and funding of facial recognition technology by the Philadelphia Police. I'm pretty afraid that such technology will negatively affect vulnerable populations, especially black men and women, especially after how horribly the police have acted last week in response to protests. I also oppose this bill since it would seem to pull resources away from areas like education and public health. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Yep, thanks.
Any Ibohian?
I'm sorry?
You're released, sir. The next speaker is Any Ibohian?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Okay. Just please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Okay.
Yeah, just state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony. If you could lift your voice a little higher, we have difficulty hearing.
How is this? Is this loud enough?
That's fine.
you are forcing people to basically hold their, hold their identification, hold their I D like on their face, right? Um, it really just kill, it really just, uh, does not serve the public and it endangers marginalized communities because it allows for racist, racist police officers to be able to track people, um, with, almost with, with impunity. Um, I understand that the use of facial recognition technology right now is not, um, widely known, and that is also very concerning to me. Um, but I think right now, Council is in a great position to use this resolution to call on the mayor to actually just ban, ban its use, um, throughout the, the city of Philadelphia. Um, because in reality, if we are asking for, um, the city, I mean, for the state, um, and for the federal government to provide the policy on, um, facial recognition technology, I feel like that deeper, that only legitimizes its use. Um, and it, it, you don't need to be parsing, um, we don't need to be figuring out like how it can be used safely. We need to just ban it indefinitely so that we can protect, um, our First Amendment rights, right? Because we look at Ferguson, everything, everything coming out of Ferguson, and as of right now, um, six people, six organizers, um, that were present in the Ferguson uprising, um, had been murdered. And so, you know, we know that there's a long history of, of police surveillance of black movements and, uh, of black people. And so if Council wants to show solidarity for the moment that we are in nationally, they should use this moment to be on the right side of history and, and do the right thing in this moment, which is calling on the mayor to, um, to, uh, to ban the use of facial recognition by executive order. So thank you so much for hearing my testimony, and I hope Council can make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Kara Cloud?
Your call has been forwarded to an automated voice messaging system.
Next?
Phil Mayfair?
Hi, this is Phil.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Is this, uh, the call from City Council?
Yeah, uh, you're, you're actually, uh, in the, uh, public meeting, um, so if you could just state your name and proceed with your testimony.
Great, thank you. Uh, my name is Phil Nifer. Uh, I'm calling to object to bill two zero zero two six seven and the use and funding of facial recognition technology by the Philadelphia Police. Um, I, I'm pretty afraid that such technology will negatively affect vulnerable populations, especially black men and women, especially after how horribly the police have acted last week in response to protests. I also oppose this bill since it would seem to pull resources away from areas like education and public health. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Yep, thanks.
Any Iboamian?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, you're released, sir. The next speaker is Any Iboamian?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Um,
Um.
Just please, uh, state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony, and could you make, make your voice a little louder, because the...
Okay, um, and we know what this is regarding, right?
I...
My name is Any Iboamian, and, um, I'm basically speaking about facial recognition, um, passing that bill. And so in a time where we lack policing reform, we do not need to add fuel to the fire of police brutality against people of color, especially black and brown communities. Um, in addition, I think a facial recognition tool will be used to violate our First Amendment rights, even if it's done inadvertently. No matter how clear boundaries and transparent policies, how many clear boundaries and transparent policies you try to establish regarding the use of facial recognition technology, you can't overcome the bigotry and racism that lies in the human heart. Um, this is not the time to implement this policy, and doing this will only guarantee a state-endorsed genocide of black and brown people in our community and in our city. Thanks.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you, bye.
The next speaker is Oliver Harris.
Uh, facial recognition, um, passing that bill. And so in a time where...
Morning.
Good morning. Sorry, it can't be. Can you say it one more time?
Yeah, just, uh, state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony. If you could lift your voice a little, little higher, it'll be difficult to hear.
How is this? Is this loud enough?
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. My name is Dr. Oliver Harris. I'm a resident of Fishtown, and I hold a doctorate in chemical and biological engineering from Drexel University. I am against any resolution that allows for the use of facial recognition software by the Philadelphia Police or any other department within the Philadelphia city structure. We all have a lot to do today to take care of our fellow Philadelphians, so I'll make this as quick as I can. You've already heard from many other concerned Philadelphians about all of the various, um, inadequacies in any sort of regulation of the software. So I'm only going to highlight what I think is salient here. Every single, uh, First Amendment advocacy group, civil rights group, civil liberties group, what have you, is vehemently opposed to using this technology by police departments. You should consider the already published positions by the Electronic Frontier Foundation and the American Civil Liberties, uh, A C L U. You've already heard that several cities have already banned its use, including Cambridge, Massachusetts, and San Francisco. And in fact, I want to draw attention to the specific technology being considered here, ClearView A I, that Philly P D piloted in November. New Jersey, as a state, has already banned this technology from being used by its police departments. So now I want to focus on this current moment. We, other, other Philadelphians have already told you the way that surveillance technologies exacerbate pre-existing racial biases in policing. News outlets like Wired, Gizmodo, Fox, and Buzzfeed have all documented that these technologies fail to distinguish between facial features of black people, which invariably leads to disproportionately high false positives for black people. Even the Department of Homeland Security and the National Institute of Standards and Technology, M I S, have published results documenting the abject failure of this technology to be equitable. Additionally, in this time where everyone is wearing masks to protect public health, we are, are going to undoubtedly see spikes in misidentifications from this technology's use. Finally, I submit that the entire enterprise of predictive policing has been widely denounced as an inherently racist approach to public safety and must be dismantled to ensure the safety of the people of this city. Now I want to focus on the specific department in question. Last year, we learned that hundreds of officers within Philly P D were active members in racist Facebook groups. Two Jewish former officers are suing the department over the discrimination they faced, and there's even an officer who was rehired by the department, Officer Liptoman, who has a visible Nazi tattoo that continues to go viral worldwide week after week. So do you honestly believe that Philadelphians are going to feel safe with these same racist officers getting unfettered access to even more invasive tools to terrorize our communities? At a time when trust between the people and the police is at the lowest point in anyone's living memory, and when every Philadelphian is hurting for real change, do you all have an opportunity here to do the right thing? Right now, this very same department is being documented every day infringing on civil liberties, breaking international laws governing use of chemical weapons on civilians, and showing blatant disregard for the life and safety of Philadelphians. Is this the legacy that you want to be known for, enabling more of this? You can get out in front of this. You can lead cities nationwide in defending your constituents from the inherent violence of facial recognition software, or you can cower to the police, who already face no accountability for their wrongdoings and likely would never face any consequences if their violence can be blamed on a simple algorithm malfunction. To be clear, anything less than an outright ban is enabling the next George Floyd to happen here, and we cannot allow that. Black Lives Matter, act now or stand down, I yield my time.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
The next speaker is Candace Gwen.
Mr. President.
Uh, Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Um, two things. One, so that if people feel that the intent of that resolution or bill was to further facial recognition, that is not the case. So we will withdraw the resolution to provide greater clarity. The intention of the resolution was to find out where they are actually using that technology, unbeknownst to City Council. Um, and I appreciate the advocates who are bringing this strong opposition, um, to our attention. But again, for further clarification, that was not our intention. We want to be informed about when and where this type of technology is being used in the city of Philadelphia and for what purpose. So, um, going forward, uh, we can make a motion after public comment uh, to withdraw that resolution to find out where this is being used. And we'll figure out a way to get that through the budget process.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, we will recognize you at the appropriate time in this session, uh, to take action on, on that particular resolution. Thank you. M- Mr. Decker, please continue.
The next speaker is Candace Gwen.
Hello?
Good morning. You can, uh, please just, just state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony, and you can speak a little louder, uh, to make sure that, uh, all can hear you.
Is this for the, um, is this a hearing for the bill?
No, this is the council meeting.
Oh, okay.
So this is appropriate time in session, which you have signed up for.
Okay, sure.
And this is a resolution not a bill, okay? Please proceed.
Sure, my name is Candace Gwen. Um, I called yesterday in opposition to the bill be, well, because I feel that the Philadelphia funds should not be used anymore for the police funding. We should, seeing that May, Mayor Kenny, um, proposed so many tax cuts for social services, I feel that our funding should be used for those, especially the libraries, the community centers, et cetera. And yeah, I do feel that using a facial recognition technology is incredibly dangerous and should not be funded at all with city money. So yeah, thank you.
Thanks, thank you, thank you for your testimony, ma'am.
Okay, take care.
The next speaker is Jermaine Lloyd.
Well, nah, nah, nah.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning. Uh, just please, please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Yes, uh, so, uh, I spoke with my, uh, organizer, organizer earlier. Actually, I won't be testifying on this for a while, um, unfortunately, so.
Okay.
All right then. All right, okay.
Thank you, thank you.
The next speaker is Howard Fisher.
Two, one, five, four, three, two.
Next person to sit down.
The next speaker is Marjorie Lasfall.
Hello?
Good morning.
Good morning, who's calling?
Uh, they're calling you from the City Council meeting. You know, you indicated an interest in testifying on public comment.
Hello?
Hello, yeah. Did you, did you want to, uh, testify on public comment in the City Council session?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely, hi.
Yeah.
My name is Leah, and I'm a member of Washington, Pennsylvania.
Okay.
Yes, my name is... Hold on, Leah, we're not, they didn't put us in yet. Okay, just when he, when, uh, he gives us the, go ahead, then you can go.
Mr. Decker, call her name again, who's supposed to testify?
Marjorie.
Marjorie La- Lasfall?
Hello?
Yeah, is this Marjorie?
No, this is Leah Faust.
All right, that's, that's the next speaker on the list, Mr. President.
Okay, well, why don't we, since we have her on, why don't we proceed with her? Um, if you could just state, state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
My name is Leah Faust, and I'm a member of Washington, Pennsylvania. I'm testifying on resolution two zero zero two six seven. Our city is on fire. Our people are hurting, and in the midst of a pandemic, black communities are crying out for help and safety, for housing, for education, for employment, for respect. We can't afford to keep funding weapons and technology for the police to be able to use on black lives. The police have been traumatized in our community for too long. It is shameful to be investing in technology for the police while we are being extified over Trump. Mayor Jim Kinney's fourteen million dollar increase in the Philadelphia Police Department's budget is wrong. Using or giving the police more military-style weapons is wrong. The crisis facing our cities is housing, addiction, hunger, poverty, and unemployment. How can we justify this continued increase in police power and inflated spending? Well, let me tell you a story about the people who will use this technology, right? You listening? I will tell you right now what it is. I was on a bus with my kids coming from grocery shopping. We all had on our mask, but my son had a lollipop in his mouth. But you know, kids, they want their candy. So it was hard to keep his mask on. The bus driver stopped and called the cops on us. I was extremely hurt and didn't know what to do. We were far from home, and when the cops came, I didn't want any trouble. I expressed my honest feelings and told the police officer I felt the bus driver was being mean and kind of racist. As soon as I said that to the cop, he grabbed me and started to choke me by my neck and slammed me in the ground right in front of my kids. That's not what our, our youth is supposed to see. And other cops also watched as well, while people on the bus watched as well. I felt scared and humiliated. It just felt like before the cops even arrived, he had plans on hitting me anyway. When he slammed me on the ground, my face was in the concrete. I felt like a freaking animal or something, or not even human, something that belonged in the damn zoo. I'm a human being. And then he finally paid handcuffs on me, and he gonna pick me in the car and ask me what happened. He talked about how I needed to calm down. I was only expressing my feelings. He needs to calm down, he needs some type of more training or something, not no more funding in his police department. I told him what happened about the lollipop, then he had the nerve to say, wow, that's why the bus driver called us? I felt like he could have killed me by mistake. The solution, the solution to our problem is to invest in housing, jobs, resources for our youth. The city does not need some bit more funding into the police department. We need resources for housing, the youth, and addressing addiction and mental health issues in our community. Homelessness is, is permanently linked with the criminal and juvenile justice system already. Almost fifty thousand people a year enter homeless shelters immediately after exiting incarceration. And people returning from jail or prison face barriers to finding stable housing, employment due to legal restrictions and discrimination against those with criminal weapons. That's why I'm calling you, the youth city speakers, to pass the emergency housing recovery act on the housing trust and protect the, the mayor's office of labor. Pass the emergency housing act tomorrow.
All right, ma'am.
Do not increase the police budget next week.
Okay, ma'am, can I, can I ask you a question? Um, is it okay if, um, we follow up this with a call to you so we can get more detail and, and do a follow-up on the incident that you had? I just don't want to take it upon ourselves to call you without you being okay with that. Okay?
As long as I don't try to take my identity or something, or try to take my identity, and try to do something out for that.
No, this is, this is me, okay? I just want, just want to make sure that your issue gets adjusted. This will be an anonymous, you know, a very confidential phone conversation. Okay?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your testimony.
All right.
There are no other speakers in the public comment list, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Uh, okay, I'm gonna go see. Okay, um, we will now, um, consider the resolution on the second reading and final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, if you can please read the title of the resolution number two zero zero three three two.
A resolution condemning any and all racist and xenophobic rhetoric against Asian and Asian-American communities amid the rise of COVID-nineteen and expressing appreciation for the resilience, support, and contributions of the city of Philadelphia's Asian-American and Chinese, Chinese-American communities.
Thank you. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Introduce that count, from again, express...
Oh, Jim, I'm sorry. She said, oh. I'm getting these text messages from other individuals. Okay, I'm sorry, apologies.
Chair recognizes...
I'm ready to adopt it, the resolution.
Second.
Move and pop, be second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, aye, have it, and that resolution is... Um, I, I think Councilwoman Theater, can I?
No, I'm gonna...
Okay, I'm just getting, people are sending me text messages.
Sorry about that.
That's okay, I, I'm sorry. You move and bar, very challenging. Okay. Um, we will now move to the resolution two zero zero seven.
A resolution calling on the mayor of Philadelphia to formally appoint a provisional chief recovery officer position to the Department of Finance, responsible for the management and administration of federal and state grants or otherwise categorized COVID-nineteen financial recovery dollars to the city of Philadelphia until the mayor and City Council do so jointly determine that the position had, shall be dissolved. That's my... Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you, the move and second that the resolution be adopted, all in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Uh, thank you. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions on today's calendar?
A re, a, a resolution authorizing City Council's committees on Public Health and Human Services and Commerce and Economic Development to consider the city of Philadelphia's revenue collection and regulatory policies for businesses and property owners to support economic recovery from the COVID-nineteen crisis. Introduced by Councilwoman Fiona Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Fiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. Before I call for a motion to move, I just want to thank the administration and the revenue commissioner who worked with our office around what does the smart restart collection strategy look like? And how do we help our small businesses to make decisions about reopening and payment plans? This is especially important as we weigh in all of the decisions over the next few weeks, particularly tomorrow, as we talk about renters and landlords. The ability of folks to get on a payment plan with no interest, no penalty, no deposit is huge. It could be the difference... It could be the difference between me deciding to open up my business or not. So I wanna thank the administration for working with us on this and look forward to the hearings as we help our small businesses not only recover, but thrive post the pandemic. Thank you. I move for the motion.
Second.
Move and probably second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, aye, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing May two thousand twenty as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Philadelphia to commemorate the proud heritage of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders and their vital contributions that continue to enhance the city's culture, economy, and the founding ideals of independence and democracy, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President, I move for the option of the resolution.
Second.
You still move and probably second, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, and that resolution is adopted.
Mr. President, does Councilman Jones have, uh, want to be recognized?
Yes, he does.
Yeah. Um, before, Councilman, before you go, um, we actually asked our technicians, please try to correct the speed, actually, in the line, Z technicians. That there were a lot of significant feedback to, to hear, and almost we have challenges. Um, Chair, you're gonna recognize this, Councilman Jones?
Um, I wanna thank all of the advocates that weighed in on, um, resolution number two zero zero two one seven. It's important in today's climate that we at least listen and hear each other's concerns. Um, facts, not fiction, or fears should rule public policy. So I wanna say, um, that this resolution's intention was to look at where we are currently using this type of technology, whether it's at airports, when people are, are going through terminals to be identified, whether it is at our DIBIC, uh, down, uh, in South Philly, where they are maybe, maybe, using it to identify people, uh, in, on our streets. The point of the resolution was, we don't know how they are using it. And we wanted to clarify how it is being used. But I would like to, uh, offer the withdrawal of, uh, resolution number two oh oh two one seven, um, because we should hear advocacy. I will simply ask these questions during budget hearings to ask the commissioner and the police department how we are using this type of technology and if we should be using it at all. So with that, I move for the withdrawal of resolution two zero zero two one seven.
Mr. President, should I read the title?
Yeah, um, I think I have two six seven. Two one?
Six, six, seven, sir.
Alright, thank you. Yes, please read the title.
Resolution two zero zero two six seven entitled a resolution calling on the Philadelphia Police Department as well as state and federal law enforcement officials to establish clear boundaries and issue transparent policies regarding the use of facial recognition technology to ensure that this technology does not lead to racial biases in policing practices and outcomes, or infringe on individuals' civil liberties.
Thank you. There's been a motion, uh, by Councilman Jones to withdraw, can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Mr. President, may I be recognized?
Um.
After, after the vote.
Alright. Um, the motion to withdraw, uh, resolution number two zero zero two six seven has been approved. Um, it is approved, and it, two zero zero two six seven will be withdrawn. Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
I wanna thank my colleagues for their patience. Uh, we're going through a whole lot, uh, today. But I've learned in the last ten days that being loud doesn't mean right. You have to listen more than you talk. Uh, and at the end of the day, if we communicate with each other, we can create greater understanding. So with that, um, spirit, we withdrew this bill. I'm going to simply ask the question in the hearings for the police to find out what the boundaries are and whether that technology should be used. So, um, I'm thankful for the advocates, uh, to express themselves, but it's better for us to communicate to get better understanding of each other's intentions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman, thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. We concluded there. Um, prior to recognizing members regarding speeches, um, or note for the record, this time that we will use the chat feature available in Microsoft Teams to allow the members to signify that they wish to be recognized. In order to comply with the Santi Act, the chat feature must only be used for this purpose. This says, are there any speeches on the part of the majority? Uh, let's see. And we get, the speeches on the part of the majority. Let's see, we have two o's.
Oh, oh. Oh, oh.
Hello, Chair recognizes, Councilman O.
Thank you very much, uh, Council President, and thank you, Majority Leader. Uh, just briefly, understood, nothing speaks louder than the video of George Floyd. That video's been seen around the world. That was a bad police officer, surrounded by other negligent and, and, um, other bad police officers, that was in Minneapolis. We have our issues in Philadelphia, uh, and, and, and no one knows that better than all of us here and those in our law enforcement community, we need good police. There are one hundred fifty-eight murders as of today. The murder rate in Philadelphia is up twenty-one percent. Attempted murder, possible murder through aggravated assault is up twenty percent. So yes, very important issues have been raised about better policing and addressing, uh, inequality and, and, and police brutality, all of that is important. But the people on the front line, and yes, education, jobs, but right now, right today, we have been dealing with, and especially our district council people have been dealing with epidemic of murder in our city. And that has to be dealt with, and we do deal with that, and people need to be protected. So the people in the trenches, on the front line, putting themselves at risk are our law enforcement and our first responders, and people like Malik Aziz and Terry Starks and OG Law and others who go right in there and intervene. So I want people to understand that it's not simply a matter of, of, uh, reducing the effectiveness or ability of the police. It is a matter of ensuring good policing, responsive, respectful, within the law, but we also have to deal with these issues as well. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. I believe next up, we have, Councilman Jones, did you want to be recognized?
Thank you, Mr. President, um, we've all been through a lot. Um, and I wanna recognize, uh, two of our members, all of us have been through a lot, but two that I've gotten opportunity to look at up close and personal in, 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 in crisis and pressure will either bust pipes or make diamonds. Two diamonds I wanna recognize are Council, uh, per- member Gordier uh, and Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Yeah.
Both of them, um, I'm used to this. I'm used to people being so wrong that they've convinced themselves they're right. But they are new to this from this way. And, um, I watched bravery, uh, from, uh, remember Gordier down at Fifty Second and Market Street where she was dealing with tear gas? I know you did not sign up for that, but you faced it down, you, you, you represented the community well, and I, I have to put that on the record. Catherine Gilmore Richardson, uh, we, we all know from her staffing days. Uh, but in the heat of it, when, um, when, in the darkest moments of some of the looting, she called me up and asked me, Councilman, you ready to go ride out? Two, two businesses on Haverford Avenue, we're gonna stand in front of the businesses and stop the looters. Mr. President, I said, no, we not. And she was disappointed, uh, that, you know, we didn't get to go. But the next, very next day, she had called on her sorority and fraternity brothers to come out where you joined us and other members of council joined us at Fifty Second and Parkside where that mall had been decimated and had her broom and, and was cleaning up. I, I was proud of all of our members that showed up for that, but I was very proud of our new members that stepped up to the plate in a time of crisis, did not break, uh, and, 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 and were credits, uh, to this body. So I wanted to recognize them publicly. I expect that from you, President Clark. I expect that from, uh, uh, leadership and, 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 and members that are seasoned veterans. But when the new class steps up like that, I wanna recognize that. And thank you publicly for, uh, for being members.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilman Green. Councilman Green, you still with it? Somebody can, uh, reach out, I know he's having challenges with his technology today. Uh, may I tell him I'll go to the Councilwoman about the air?
Thank you, um, thank you so much for the recognition, um, Councilmember Jones, it's been a, a rough couple days. Thank you. Um, I'm sorry. I wanted to say, um, I wanted to thank all of the advocates who called in today, um, and also all of the people who have been making their voices heard across the city on this conversation about policing and what it looks like in Philadelphia and across the country. Um, I think, you know, the removal of the Rizzo statue, the removal of the Rizzo mural, um, were great symbolic, uh, gestures. Um, they're signals that we're listening, um, but I think we need to go deeper, um, than that to really get at the root of the anger and the pain that's been displayed over the past few days, um, in, in the city. And, you know, what's at the root is structural racism. Um, and, you know, it's never been more obvious to me that at this moment in time, we need to prioritize investment in our black communities and we need to devote resources to the things beyond policing that keep people safe and thriving. And that's, um, investments in our schools, um, investments in safe, affordable housing, um, our parks, our recreation centers, our libraries. Um, those are the things that keep people out of the criminal justice system. Uh, I think we've been taking a very narrow view of what public safety means, um, in, in this city. And I hope we can, I hope that this is a time to expand that view. And so I just wanna commend everyone that made their voices heard today and, and I want to say to my colleagues that now is a time for us to ask ourselves if it is equitable, um, i- if for us to be increasing the police budget by fourteen million dollars while we're cutting many, many things that can really help black and brown people in this city. Um, I, I think I've been, you know, I think most folks would know my answer to that and, and my answer to that is no. But I look forward to having a, a discussion with my colleagues as this budget cycle goes on and, and thank you so much, um, thank you for the recognition. You caught me a little bit off guard, um, made me tear up over here. Um, thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. It's always good to see the human side of, of every individual. Um, did we connect with Councilman Green yet?
Can you talk?
Hmm? Councilman Green, we're trying to.
Still can't hear you. You still can't hear me, Derek, you still can't.
You still, oh boy, okay. Alright, uh, okay, well, um, before I call on Councilman Jones, um, um, my colleagues, as you all know, we have a lot of work to do. Uh, the pace of our work, um, obviously is accelerated, um, by a number.
Thomas, Thomas, Isaiah Thomas, say it.
Okay.
I'm here, can I be recognized?
Oh, Councilman? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not, just for whatever reason today, this is, uh, not working on the members.
Cindy, Councilwoman Bass, Mr. President, and Isaiah Thomas are in queue.
Okay, thank you, for some reason, I'm not getting it on my phone, um, I don't know why, but Councilwoman, who's next? I'll, I'll ask you.
Councilwoman Bass is next.
Councilwoman Bass?
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, uh, uh, Councilwoman Parker. Um, I just wanted to, uh, make comments, you know, it's, it's been, uh, quite a week here in Philadelphia and there's been a lot that's been said, there's been a lot that's been done. I think we all woke up on Monday or over the weekend, uh, but, but culminating really on Monday and woke up as if, uh, you know, wh- what just happened here? What just happened in the city? What happened in our city? And as a lifelong Philadelphian, I remember back in the day, as they say, when my mother told me about Ridge Avenue. And she talked about the civil rights movement in Philadelphia and the damage that was done to Ridge Avenue, which was, um, a lot of African American shops and businesses and, um, you know, the, the damage that was done that has never been repaired to this day, never been repaired. And so, uh, I am, uh, you know, just glad that, uh, we recognize that people are frustrated, people are upset. Uh, there's never an excuse for looting or vandalizing, vandalism or damage, uh, to, to property, um. But I actually really wanted to speak on a headline that was in the Philadelphia Inquirer on Tuesday, which said, Buildings Matter Too. And it was a discussion on, uh, the importance of the buildings and the architecture that was damaged as a result of the riots. And let me be absolutely clear, I never want to see damage done, uh, because as I said on, about Ridge Avenue, you know, it, it takes a long time, especially when you're in our neighborhood. It takes a long time for us to get those properties back online. Hopefully, we'll be able to get them online sooner rather than later, we're all working really hard on that. But at the same time, to suggest that a building matters as much as a human matters, I just found so inappropriate, so divisive, uh, so racially insensitive, not just along race lines, along class lines as well. I just think that that's something that, um, never should have been pointed in the first place. And I understand that there was an apology, but the apology is after the fact and, and again, uh, after the fact that the damage is done in terms of where you really stand on this issue. Buildings don't matter too when it comes to lives. Lives matter first, so you have to get your priorities straight. So I just, uh, wanted to speak out on that, Mr. President, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I believe we have Councilman Thomas next.
Can you hear me, Mr. President?
Yeah, okay.
That's not my background, but, uh, I first wanna start by, uh, also recognizing my colleagues.
Councilman, can you speak a little louder?
Can you hear me better now?
That's much better, yes.
I wanna start by recognizing my colleagues and, uh, uh, folks in council who I've been on the ground with, uh, the last couple of days and, um, everybody, you know, when you're doing this work, uh, there's not a lot of time to, to post on social media and to communicate to the public what's going on. Um, so I know, uh, myself and Councilmember Parker, uh, as well as Councilmember Brooks, uh, we spent multiple days cleaning up areas and also helping to avoid, uh, confrontations. Councilmember Parker knows exactly what I'm talking about and I appreciate her courage, uh, her, uh, her being so courageous, um, as well as, uh, Councilmember Derek Green, who's been out there with this cleaning and, uh, taking care of. and taking care of the northwest section of the city, as well as Councilmember Bass, who I've worked with and been in the streets with delivering food and helping people in their time of need. So I appreciate all of you guys and as a freshman member of council, you know, I think that it's important that I take a minute to say that I, and I'm going to take my council hat off for a second and just put on my humanity hat. You know, I came into council as a person who is very pulled back, literally and figuratively. And so when I think about what I, I'm like, man, I'm going to come into council and, you know, we're going to really rep things and I'm going to make sure that the black agenda is there. I have been overwhelmed and overjoyed by my colleagues and their advocacy for black folks and black people before coronavirus, during coronavirus, before the unfortunate tragedy that we're facing right now with Brother Jones and even during this time right now. And again, I'm taking my council hat off and I'm one of the few people on council who fit the description. And I see these images and I see things that happen. I see myself in it and I hear the pain for my colleagues who also, not only some of them see themselves, but see their children, their grandchildren, their aunts, their uncles, their cousins. We feel that pain and we've been doing that advocacy before it was the cool thing to do. Prior to all this stuff happening, council had already talked about what police reform looks like. Now, now we have an opportunity to really move on some of those things. So I just wanted to put that out there because I know there are a lot of people who are questioning the integrity of members of council. I know there are a lot of people who are questioning whether or not we are really for people of color and whether or not we really want to see change in Philadelphia for people of color. As a young black man who has been pulled over by police, who knows what it feels like to have your hand been put down your pants, who you know firsthand, Council President, I had to call you last year to help me out with an incident involving police and you was right there to help me out. We understand the issue and we recognize that this is an opportunity for police reform and we're going to advocate for that like we've been doing. I'm sorry, Council President, I know I was a little boggled and I normally am. There's a lot of rumors out there and misinformation that's been communicated that's not accurate and reflective of the work that the body has been doing. And for me, I know that I'm in pain when I see them images, but imagine how much more the pain is when people tell us that we not for this when we've been fighting for this. Imagine my pain when I got to deal with not just the images, but now people saying that what, people telling us what we not about when I ran for this issue. This is why I'm here at the table is to be able to have a chance to fight for this issue and communicate our concern. And I know that there are people on city council who are just as passionate, if not more passionate as me, as well as the people who are marching in the streets. The folks who are in the streets, you're doing it your way and we respect that. But there cannot be change without change in legislation and we are all sacrificing to be here to make sure that that legislative change can take place. I'm done. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman, and thank you for your commitment before and after your tenure. And I know you're going to be one of those voices for a long, long time to come in the city council of Philadelphia and we appreciate you. I believe that Councilwoman Kieran Sanchez is up next.
Councilman Green, Mr. President, Councilmember Green.
Okay, so is Councilwoman Sanchez not seated up?
She was commenting on a comment that Councilman Jones was making. She didn't press to speak.
Okay. Okay. Uh, Councilman Green?
Uh, Council President, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, we've had a very difficult week here in this city, in our state, in our nation, and I received a number of calls from people and text messages asking, "How can I help? What can I do to help deal with this issue?" And so I took a moment to think about that question and my response to that question is, "Are you committed to making lasting change in the African-American community?" But Derek, I marched at protests regarding the census killing of George Floyd and the concern regarding Breonna Taylor and Armon Aubrey and I thank you for that. But my question again is, "Are you committed to making lasting change in the African-American community?" And people say, "Derek, well, I joined others to call the removal of the Rizzo statue and I sent emails regarding the mayor's budget proposal and I thank you for the advocacy, but are you committed to making lasting change in the African-American community?" Well, Derek, and this came up in Councilmember Bass and I thank her for making that point. You know, people said to me, I called the Inquirer regarding their sensitive article entitled, "Buildings Matter Too." Thank you for that, but are you committed to making lasting change in the African-American community? And when we reflect on the killing of George Floyd and we think about Breonna Taylor, Armon Aubrey, we must remember with the George Floyd situation, this tragedy started with a man just trying to make a purchase. When we think about the disparate impact of COVID-19 on the black and brown communities and the heroic work of the Black Doctors COVID-19 Consortium, we know that people of color do not have access to adequate healthcare. All of these issues are connected to poverty and historic economic injustice and inequities of African-Americans. In this city, African-Americans make 44% of the population, but we do not represent 44% of the wealth of this city. As we've seen with Rodney King, Trayvon Martin, and now George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and Armon Aubrey, protests will go on and rallies will go on, but it will also fade into time. So I ask again, are you committed to making lasting change by making an investment in the African-American community? If you represent an organization, are you committed to buying 40%, 44% of your goods and services from the African-American community? For black doctors, black lawyers, black banks like United Bank? If you're an individual and you've been part of all these protests and rallies, are you committed to buying 44% of your goods and services from the African-American community? For a black contractor, a black realtor, a black insurance agent? Although we have made progress with civil rights, we have not really addressed historic economic injustice in our city and our nation. So I ask once again, are you committed to make an investment to make lasting change in the African-American community? Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Well said. Thank you so much. Chair recognizes Councilman Squillen.
Thanks, Council President, and thank you for your leadership during these times and it's, especially the last week or so, it's been a challenge. And I want to put you on mute one second, Council President.
There was a lot of background noise there, I apologize. And we know as we work through this together, we still have so much to learn. And I think sometimes when you're elected official and you think you know everything and you're out there making decisions and doing things and obviously we have to start by listening. I think one thing we do sometimes is we react and we say things and do things without listening. And I think if we learn anything from what happened over the last week is to take our time, listen to people, see what hurts, see what challenges are, and then work together with them and us to come together to make affecting change that will last forever. And, you know, little tokens of, "We hear you and we did this and then we can move on," it's not going to work. It doesn't work and then all that happens is we end up at the same place again. And so I think if we could come up together with ways that we can make an announcement to say, "These are the things we're going to do to effectuate change in our system in the city of Philadelphia and we're going to commit to these things as a body." We could really make this happen and we can make it happen and people could see it and they could hold us accountable for that. And they'd be able to go to those ballot boxes and they could vote. And I think that's the most important thing. If we don't do that, then they should vote for somebody else and they should hold us accountable for our decisions. And whether it's affordable housing, is it money for our housing trust fund? Is it access to jobs? Is it raising men wage? All the things that we could do as city council to bring, to lift people up so that they become self-sufficient is something we need to do. And then, and sometimes, you know, we talk a lot and we don't listen and maybe we should be quiet for a little while and continue to listen and then come up with a plan that really works. And I believe if we do that, we'll get through this together and we'll be stronger and we'll be a better city. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Well said. Uh, Councilwoman Parker?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Mr. President, let me just start in just noting that there's an international author and activist by the name of Waile Bonin and he reminds the world of a phrase that he often states and he says, "The power of the people is greater than the people in power." The power of the people is greater than the people in power. And as we've seen, the activity taking place across the nation with people from all walks of life expressing their outrage and concern regarding the deaths and murders, and we're going to call it what it is, the murders of George Floyd, Armon Aubrey, Breonna Taylor, and just for the record, all of those names of people who we don't know because their stories did not make it into the mainstream media, we see that activity. But I have to say this for the record. Councilman Green, thank you so very much for your argument about the economic impact because I want to say specifically to the black community, the African-American community, I am pleased to see so many people from all walks of life in our nation and particularly our city stand up to talk about the police reforms that we need and I do think we will achieve them. But even more than that, if we're truly interested in closing the gap between the haves and the have-nots and giving African-American people, black people and other brown people access to what Councilman Squillen called, "The opportunity to achieve self-sufficiency," we can't do that without our willingness to share a piece of the economic pie. So I hope that I hear people as committed and persistent when it comes to talking about who are the funds that are benefiting from doing business with the city of Philadelphia? Who's getting contracts and has historically to do business in the city of Philadelphia? I hope I hear the same fervor and passion when we talk about boards and commissions that this council has been talking about for years and the need for diversity and inclusion. Because sometimes around some social issues, we will get a ground swell of support and unity, but when it comes time to talk about dividing the economic pie, sometimes the voices dwindle. So I'm looking forward to working with each and every one of you, my colleagues, to do what we do in our space and that is to proffer legislative initiatives that will help us do exactly what we just described. And each and every one of you, and I mean this from the bottom of my heart, all 17 of you are doing your best and continue to move forward to make sure that we provide access to opportunities for all Philadelphians. And I'm damn proud to serve as a part of this body with each and every one of you and I look forward to us delivering results and not jargon for the benefit of the people. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, I think that is all the members, so I'll say a couple of words, although I'm not supposed to speak from the podium, the podium as it is today, but we are in new normal. I just want to say how proud I am to serve with all of you. Like Councilwoman Parker said, I know firsthand what all of you do and the passion that you bring to this job, the commitment, the dedication, be it in the street, in city hall, in your neighborhood. But the simple reality is that members of council are expected to wear multiple hats and that's a good thing because you need to have a perspective of all people, all communities, all aspects of what it is that's going on in the world today. And sometimes that pace quickens and it slows down. The simple reality is that council members are, people want to see us be involved in things that may just be symbolic for the sole purpose of giving people symbolism because in some instances symbolism is a good thing. It shows people what you're about. Some instances, being involved in action, be it a protest, is a good thing, you know, and members do get involved in those issues. But as elected officials, we're charged with something else and we're charged with ensuring that everything all these council members talked about today is delivering the resources to the people that need. We have to make difficult decisions in this particular time, given our fiscal situation. But at the end of the day, as those difficult decisions get made, we can't forget what we're about and we move forward on a number of very important initiatives that would address those people before the COVID hit us, but we can't give up on that particular issue. We got to proceed tomorrow, tomorrow, and it will be some sort of an announcement today put out. We will be laying out a program that addresses in a substantive way, an initiative that we think will be a down payment, so to speak, on what we will be doing, tangible commitments as relates to making sure that we address the ills. Some will be legislative, some will be budgetary, some will be laying out leadership in terms of moving forward. There will be a conversation and a partnership with all members of government because the city of Philadelphia can't do it alone, right? There are several branches of government, both executive and legislative. We got to work together and what I don't want us to see, I, please, do not let people divide us. We already have one person that's doing that, you know, and that's the strategy and it's all political, right? But we cannot let people divide us. Unify, we can go to wherever we want to go and I genuinely believe that as a person and a member that's been around through a lot of different administrations, a lot of different challenges. If we work together, we stay together, we stay focused on the prize and the prize is making sure that everybody has an opportunity. I mean, and I mean everybody, right? I don't care what your background was or how much you were prepared or where you just got released from, you should still have an opportunity. So tomorrow, we will be rolling out what I believe and the members of council believe to be some substantive agenda that we will make sure that we move this city forward in a meaningful way. So again, I want to thank all of you all so much for your continued commitment. I love you all, even when every now and then I get a little mad at one of you all. I don't show it to you because I'm the council president, I'm not supposed to show emotions. I know, I get that, right? But the reality is that I really do genuinely love you all. You are my council family and I see you all way more particularly in these times than I see my real family. So with that, I wanted to recognize Councilman Jones for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, June 11th, 2020 at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. That means that council stand adjourned at 10:00 a.m. All those favors say hi. Hi, Karen. Motion, Karen. Thank you all very much. God bless you and I love you.